Welcome in our co-hosts, the Admiral Bill Stubblefield, former President of the Berkeley County Commission.
Rob, good morning. Great to be here. It is. Regardless of what you told me when I first walked in the door, it's great to be here.
Also Maria Lawrenson is with us. Good morning Maria.
Good morning. Happy to be here.
The other half of the Bill and Maria combo.
And you were greeted much better when you came in than what I was Maria. He was still asleep though.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
You know.
We'll make up for it.
I'm sitting here at 7:30 every morning, Bill walks in at 7:30 and comes in with a big smile on his face. And then he insults me.
But it disappears.
He insults me, he smiles at me, "How are you this morning, Rob?" I answer and then here comes the first criticism of the day. "Once an Admiral, always an Admiral Maria."
Not criticism.
Yeah, I think I've heard that somewhere.
Constructive suggestions.
Yes, but finding another career path probably isn't the way you want to be constructive, I think, when you say that to me, Bill. You know, Rob, have you ever thought about doing something else?
The audience is going to think there's some truth to this venture. There is none at all.
Our guests in this segment from the Berkeley County Commission, the President Eddie Gokenauer. Eddie, good morning to you.
Good morning, Rob.
And the Vice President, Mr. Steve Catlett.
The soup looks better than me's.
I'm going to be focused on the soup, Steve. I mean, it's just right up there and big.
I don't know. I think it's fish soup, I'm not sure.
Oh, then no.
But I don't like fish so much, right?
Clam chowder wouldn't be so bad.
Yeah, for whatever reason, fish never... I can eat some, but generally speaking, if you're going to give me 10 things on a menu to order and nine of them are fish, I'm going to take the one that's not.
But that soup looks good.
I encourage you to eat it.
I will. If I had the opportunity, I probably would.
Yeah, very good. Gentlemen, welcome in once again. It's great to have you here. We always appreciate you doing the hour with us.
Good to be here. Thanks for having us.
Are summer months generally speaking slower for you folks than the other nine?
No. Nobody takes their foot off the accelerator. I can tell you. It doesn't matter whether it's snow blowing or so hot you can't stand it. There's always stuff going on.
Yeah, we're re-entering the so hot you can't stand it phase of that description there, Eddie. So.
I would say during the budget process in January, February and up to mid-March, it's probably our busiest times in terms of meeting as a commission and settling business.
That's got to be a full sprint at that time. We're wrapping up the month of August here and about, what is this, the 13th? So 18 days left and you get Labor Day and then they close the pools down and such. So I have you go back to your pool days, Steve, when you were running Parks and Rec. And Joe tells us that there is a, Joe Burton, a pretty good leak at War Memorial. Is that something that you guys are now looking at as budgeting as a major repair over there going forward?
We've had meetings and talked, discussed that with the city. So yes, if there, there's no question there's a leak and it's going to need to be fixed before next year and I think we're going to be willing to partner with the city to get it fixed.
Have you folks gotten estimates yet on that?
I heard the figure 140,000, something in that range, so.
140?
Yeah.
Was it the 90s when you had to do the new liner at War Memorial?
98 is when we opened a new pool.
Yeah.
And in fact, we had a leak there, pretty massive leak, an eight-inch line, oh geez, 10 years ago and had to repair it. So it's not unusual. You know, that pool's already 27 years old, so they don't last forever.
It's hard to believe, isn't it?
And you've got to fix them, yeah.
Yeah, because I can remember talking with you across town about that.
The problem are the glued joints, you know? The glued joints just after 20 years, they start to, they start to come apart. And you know, they make a system now where it's fused together and you can't break it. And when we replaced that eight-inch line, that's what we did. We used that type of piping instead of the glued joint. And they should do it with every piece of pipe under that pool or in, you know, under the concrete. If I ever had to build a new one in my life, which won't happen, I'd make sure it was fused joints and not glued joints.
I don't remember, but in the expanded plans for Inwood Park, is a pool part of the expanded plans there or just splash park?
Splash, splash pads, splash park, yep.
Okay, is there at, even in a long-range plan, maybe in the north end of the county plans for another pool?
Not at this point in time.
So just staying fairly central then. Now, I've heard rumors, this, you know, under-talk, undertone of some kind of potential partnership with an indoor pool at some point in the future. Are you aware of any of that discussion that's going on, Steve? Is there anything you can talk about?
We are. We've had discussions and the discussions have been around the YMCA out of Frederick. Eddie and I toured their facility down there and they were interested in maybe doing something along with West Virginia Medicine here. And of course, they need daycare and so include that if they come. They were trying to decide whether to go to Jefferson or Berkeley County. And I think now at this point, they're leaning towards coming to Berkeley County possibly. So we hope that if they make that decision, that we can work together with all of our government entities in the community and the private sector to make it, make that happen. There's going to be a local, some funding that's going to need to be obtained to make it happen. And hopefully, we can partner with that and get it done. But what a wonderful thing that would be for our community if we could finally, after 40 years of talking about it, get an indoor aquatic center.
Any idea what location it might be?
It would be on hospital property, the Townsend Farm that they purchased. And also, the sweet thing about this would be, once you make the initial investment to have it built, they're going to maintain and operate it. So you don't have the, you don't have to subsidize it as government to subsidize the operation of it. And that would be really nice.
And that would not be under Parks and Rec anyway?
It would not be. But every, every resident in Berkeley County could be a member and enjoy that facility all through the winter months. And it would be a great thing for this community.
You mentioned some money may be needed. How much money we talking about, Steve?
Right now, they're, they're talking about 14 million. And you know, there's thoughts that so much could be raised from the private sector. Maybe so much could come from, some money from the state, possibly earmarked from the federal government and then a combination of local government pitching in as well. So do I think it's an obtainable figure? I do.
Has, have the talks progressed enough? Do you have any sense at all how much money the county would be obligated?
Well, I don't know if it's got that in-depth. We're thinking maybe 3 million possibly.
It had a little bit of a chart on where they would expect dollars to come from. But it's, it's still real early in that discussion as far as the total cost and where it all comes from.
Here's the good thing about it though, we do understand this, they wouldn't need it all upfront. It could be stretched out over a six-year period. And that makes it even more of a possibility.
It's interesting that you mention that because I spoke to a young man from the YMCA Frederick branch. He made a point to come to the Chamber of Commerce's evening at the Hagerstown Box Cars. And he beelined over to have a conversation about the why and, and some of the, the plans that they have. He was a little less, I don't want to say certain than you were about the location, Berkeley-Jefferson. He sort of vacillated that no, nothing firm has been set. But you know, I thought it was interesting that he made a point to come and, and be part of that evening and make the rounds with all the folks who were at the chamber event that night.
The facility that we attended was in Urbana and it was actually on a school complex where the school was right there.
The Y at the school, Urbana High School, yeah.
It's beautiful. It was absolutely wonderful. You know, we thought, man, oh man, if we could, if we could land them here. Because recently, they were really looking at Jefferson as their first designation, location. And we're like, dang on it, you know, we, we need them here. So, and, and those things could change, you know? Maybe they will change their mind or whatever. But, but I, I think that they're leaning heavily become, coming here because of our population and because of the growth of the hospital and the needs that the hospital has. So it'd be really, really great.
Yeah, they, we've been talking about YCMCA partnership for at least 20, 25 years. Is there some reason to think this has more legs than it has in times past?
I think so. 20 years ago, the talk was with the Hagerstown YMCA. This is the Frederick YMCA.
And how'd that happen? Where'd the switch come?
Well, the decision of those entities, you know? And so Frederick got interested and now, so this is the Frederick YMCA, not the Hagerstown. So, but they seem very serious about it. The facility they're going to build is going to be set up for swim competition. So the Board of Education could be a huge winner.
Oh my gosh.
For our local swim teams, high school swim teams. So it would be a answer to our prayers over the years to have a facility like this. And the medical therapy, you know, with the, with the walking of the water, the water therapy and that kind of stuff is really important. Also to WVU East. So yeah, there's, there's lots of good opportunities there.
Any idea of a timeline of when you'll find out more information?
I think possibly this fall. It could move that quickly, I think. A decision might be made in the next four, five, six months possibly.
Are there any other things that they're asking from the County Commission to present to them in regards to moving this along?
Not yet, at this point, no.
Talking about timelines, last time you were in, we were talking about impact fees and I had the impression that it was about to be very, very soon and being implemented. But I've also heard more recently that there's been a delay. What's the status of implementation of the impact fees?
Well, we're still moving forward. We have come into a little bit of a, an issue that we need to get worked out. And I will tell you right up front from the very beginning that, that is part of my, my fault. And involves the City of Martinsburg. You know, we did not want, I, I will say, I will say we, I did not want the City of Martinsburg affected by this ordinance. I fundamentally do not believe that one government agency should have any authority or consequences for another governing agency. I just don't like that. But, and, and in fairness, I was advised early in that the areas like for the school board and the parks that are a government, or I'm sorry, not a county-wide, not a government, but a county-wide systems, that they should be included, that the City of Martinsburg would have to be included. And in my direction, you know, from our legal counsel, Anthony Delagetti, who informed me to say we may have legal challenges if we don't include them. I'm like, well, you know, I understand your points, but fundamentally, I, I don't, I don't want to involve the city and please try to find a way that we don't have to involve them. So unfortunately, based on past history with Jefferson County in particular, the court cases that went through there, it does appear that we will have to include the city on the school section and the Parks and Rec and even possibly even the county administration portion dealing with the judicial center. They have their own law enforcement, they have their own fire, they have their own EMS. So those areas will not apply. But, so we did not have those discussions with the city because we didn't want the, we didn't want to involve them, you know? So Tishler and Bice, who we work with, felt comfortable that, that we did not have to involve them. Chad Weinbrun, our Deputy County Administrator, has worked tirelessly with them and, and building, building our impact fee structure. So, but it, it looks as if we're going to have to. And, and we're going to have those conversations with the city. Matter of fact, we have a meeting this afternoon. But I don't like it. I, I don't like it. That it was never our intent to involve the city. And, but unfortunately, I think we have to.
Eddie, without getting too much in detail, and I got confused as you were laying this out. The schools, the judiciary, judiciary center and, and the administration. Why does that say that you have to include the city for, with receiving impact fees?
Yeah, well, it's a, let's just take the school system for example. It's a county-wide school system that everybody in Berkeley County pays into. So it's, you know, you cannot discriminate because of geography. So if the, if a builder on Route 45 West is building a new home in Berkeley County, he will have to pay that fee. You flip across the street over on the Clee Drive, which is in the city, if we did not do that, they would not have to contribute to the school system. So that's, that's the reason. Their children will, you know, could possibly be attending those schools, but they would not have to pay those fees. And that's, that's where the discrepancy comes in and that's where the discrimination would come in.
But yet, the consultant, the group that you've been working with for, throughout this whole process, you've said in times past, they have done dozens and dozens and dozens of these impact fee agreements. This should not have been a unique situation. I would think it would apply to practically any jurisdiction we're talking about. Why did they steer you down the wrong path?
Well, I'm not sure. I, I don't know. I've not had those, those type of conversations with them. And perhaps, you know, just like, I think where, where you came from, Rob, they have districts. They don't have county-wide school systems. They have districts. That's where my grandson goes to, a different district of the school.
Pennsylvania, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't know how many actually county-wide school systems or county-wide park systems there are that a lot of times I think that they were actually broke up into districts. So in fairness, but, but at the end of the day, it does appear as if we will have to include the city and, and we, we need to sit down with them and have these discussions. And it's, it's unfortunate because that's not, that's not how we want to do this. The city has struggled enough with trying to get some growth. And I can tell you, I had no intention on, and hurting them in any way whatsoever. So it's just, it's one of those things we've got to work through and, and we will. We have a great relationship with the city. We worked very hard to get there. As everybody in the room knows, that it always hasn't been easy. But, but we, we try and we, you know, our county administrator and the city manager, they have a great relationship. They, they talk several times a week. You know, we've got a great relationship with the mayor and several of the council people. And you know, we're trying everywhere we can because I and they all believe that we are stronger if we can work together on anything, whether it's has stuff to do with government or just on projects. You know, the trail, they've included us on that trail, which is a tremendous benefit for all of us. And you know, we appreciate that.
So how did this come to light then? Was it research by Anthony, by your counsel then? Was it, oh my gosh, look at, look at Jefferson County? How did, where did this come to light? And so this pause that's on impact fees, do you anticipate how long this is going to take, either one of you?
At this point, it's not a pause. I mean, whether we're involved in this or not, once we pass the ordinance, there's a 60-day period that you have to wait before you could implement it. So the earliest we could have done it was October 1st anyway, regardless of anything. So, and that's why they do that, because you have a situation where if somebody wants to challenge it or whatever, then you work it out. So it hasn't been a pause yet. Now, if it goes beyond October 1st, then you could call it a pause, but.
But, but this wasn't a builder saying this is discrimination against those of us building in the county versus the city? That wasn't the, this was strictly looking up the legal aspects of this and then you discover that.
We're trying to get this worked out so it doesn't end up in court. I mean, that's our desire. You don't want to put it in effect and start collecting fees and all of a sudden you're challenged now where you have to then go back and whatever. So it's, we have time, we have time to work this out. We need to do it.
The, the example Eddie gave, in my mind, I thought, well, did a builder complain that, listen, I'm building on this side of the road and I'm paying a fee and that builder on the other side isn't? That's not fair to me.
No, it's actually, it's actually in our ordinance, you know, as to where the city needs to be involved. In fact, the fees that we adopted were based on not including the city.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying. So if we end up having to legally include the city, which we think we probably will, we're going to have to go back and adjust this. And it's probably going to drop it from 5,500 down to about 5,100, to be honest with you.
And if, if you are a builder in the city and you're paying impact fees, would all of that impact fee money then go to the city? Or does it still go to the county to be redistributed to the city? Or you don't have to redistribute any of it to the city?
Comes back to the county. There's the pots, the five pots will be set up and all that money goes into those pots, you know? And then you distribute it from there. It'd be a county decision to distribute it from those pots.
So the city doesn't get anything under this?
Well, that's not necessary. For instance, Parks and Rec, if, if they do have to pay for that, then we can take our capital improvements plan that we have to follow and adjust it from year to year and include some city projects in that capital improvements plan, so.
But the operative word was decision. The county would, would maintain the decision of how the money would be distributed.
Yes. Yeah, but, but we would also encourage the school board and Parks and Rec to, to have these conversations with the city about capital improvement projects in the city. That where those dollars come from those city projects, the city building, that hopefully it would, it would stay in the city. Now, it doesn't have to. It's just like today, you know, we all pay taxes and we're building a new school in Marlow that we're all paying for, you know? I mean, that's just how it works.
Is there any way at all, Eddie, and this is kind of speculative, of having the city be part of the decision process? I'm thinking of other examples, the airport authority, the library authority. All of those were, resides with either the city or the county and has always been a source of friction. Maybe not enough to boil over and make people angry, but the fact that the, the county had no real say-so for the distribution of library money and the city wanted to maintain that control. Same thing with the airport authority to some degree. Is there any way you can work out a mechanism that the city, at least at the table, as you go through the decision-making process?
I don't have a problem with it. I could, I could tell you on the, on the surface, I have no problem with it. Like I say, you know, I, I highly regard our city administration, Andy Blake, I consider a friend of him. And, and I want, I want the city to be successful. So you know, when you. It's part of Berkeley County. They're Berkeley County residents too. You try to build relationships, you know, you can't truly build a, a good, solid relationship if you're going to hold back. So, you know. We'd be open to any kind of discussions that work with them on any project.
And I think what is interesting is, is that people may not realize sort of some of the areas that the city has annexed. You made reference to Clee Drive. So we're thinking, I think of the city as being a Martinsburg resident for the past lot of years, 30-something years, that it's this, you know, little, not little area, but you know, you forget about the place, west of 81 that has been annexed in and.
And home growth, that's where it's going to occur.
And that's exactly it. Because there's not going to be too many homes built on North Delaware Avenue or King Street, you know? But when you look at west of 81, like you say, Steve, that's significant.
This won't affect local residents that are already here at all. It's just going to affect new people moving in buying a new home, period. So in fact, their, their impact fees are going to be lower than the people in the county. So, so it's, you know, I, I talk, I, let's talk about the property transfer tax, for instance, okay? Everybody in Berkeley County pays it, whether you're in the city or not, if you sell a property, okay? That money, a portion of it goes to farmland protection, the rest of it comes to the county. As of this July 1st now, the state doesn't keep anymore. It all comes to the county commission and we decide how it's dispersed. So you know, it's, it's a county-wide tax. This case is, this is a fee, impact fee, but it, the people in the city pay it as well as anyone does, so.
It's, the timing of this is very fortunate because you alluded a second ago, Eddie, that the relationship with the, between the county and the city have been quite sick. For times been very good, other times less so. Fortunately, this time, it's very, very, very good. So trying to work this out, you could not ask for a more favorable timing to, to get, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Steve and Eddie will stay with us the whole first hour here. We appreciate them doing that. TV 10 viewers. And just kind of 6:00 AM, a bowl of soup appeared and just stayed there and I don't know why. Nobody else does either at this time. We'll get it worked on during the day, yeah.
And dip, don't forget the dip. That's there too.
I wish we could smell it.
Don't you wish? Right? It's like nothing better than a Sunday when the pot of sauce is on the stove. The whole house smells like spaghetti sauce. And I always tell my wife, they should make a candle. My wife buys candles, right? I always wish they'd bring a candle that just smells like spaghetti sauce cooking in the house all day on a nice, slow simmer.
West Virginians prefer bacon or something like that.
I understand. I, I do. Let's welcome back our co-host, the Admiral Bill Stubblefield, former Berkeley County Commission President.
Rob, thank you. Good to be here.
She is Maria Lawrenson as well as a co-host. She is at Hospice of the Panhandle for how much longer?
About four months.
Four more months. Well, good for you.
Yeah, it's time.
You can become a retired co-host as well.
Yeah, so Bill and I will fight for time, right?
I, I capitulately, I give in.
Our guests include the President of the Berkeley County Commission, Eddie Gokenauer. Eddie, welcome back.
Good to be back.
Vice President Steve Catlett, good to see you, sir.
An honor to be here, Rob.
Appreciate that. And Bill, I'll let you get into that line of questioning you pursued during the break because the sponsor in this segment includes the Berkeley County Health Department Quick Response Team. So it kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, there's a couple of them, but let's go first to a lady that's going to be retiring in the next few months, and that's Penny Sewell. And I'll ask you folks to, to develop it more so than me. But I've known Penny, well, I was part of hiring Penny. And I, I cannot think of many people that has had as great a positive influence on the county commission, county council and the county in total, is what Penny has had. She's a, one, a very, very smart, capable individual. She's also very engaging. She's also intent upon helping you in every way she possibly can. I've never personally seen, and I doubt if it exists, anyone that walks into Penny's office that was not greeted with a smile and fortunately for guys like myself, a big hug. But it's, but sitting down and saying, what can I do for you? And a genuine effort to actually do what the person came in the office for. So I think she's a wonderful person. Fortunately, she's, she's, I understand is going to be retiring and coming back and working for a few months. But she has made a major, major contribution to the county in so many different ways. Gentlemen?
Yeah, she has. She's, she's a very dedicated and the most loyal employee. She's, she's a wonderful lady. I'll be honest with you, and she'll, she'll love to hear this. I didn't think that she was at retirement age. I truly didn't. I was kind of shocked when she had mentioned that she may be retiring. And I truly did not think she was near that age. So she'll like that.
And as I said off-air, Penny and I share a hairdresser. So we bump into each other. Of course, when.
Nets were all the world probably.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And we're kind of on the same schedule. So that's when you, that's when you see people. And she, I agree with Bill. She's a wonderful person, very helpful, you know, will do whatever it is to, to get your problem, not necessarily problem, issue resolved, or put it that way.
So if you have not met, I'm talking to the, the listening, viewing audience now, if you've not had the opportunity to meet Penny and to see one of the major cogs to keep the county, keep the trains on schedule for the county, go in the next couple of so months and to the county commission office and just ask to meet Penny. She's, she's really a delightful individual. We're not going to miss her because she's not leaving the county. But she, the role she's playing now, she will be missed.
Onto the issues regarding the Dairy Port Center, the one big beautiful bill and funding for that center. Eddie and Steve, do you know how your budget will be affected by that bill?
Well, at this point, we're not sure how many cuts we'll get, if any, and how deep they'll be. But it's obviously a deep concern as most communities and counties and municipalities around the state and of course, around the country. But you know, it's a situation where I've been told that one-third of our staff over there is 100% paid by grants. And the other two-thirds is, equals about 50% of their salaries and benefits. So it could be, have a major impact if it goes in the wrong direction and we hope for the best, but.
How, how big is the staff there? Number of people roughly?
I think there's 40-some employees there. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty robust. And been growing and growing, you know, the expansion of the building and.
And when you say grants, just for clarification, the bulk of the grants are federal grants, is that correct?
And credit to Tim Zia. You know, Tim is constantly working on building those relationships with our federal partners, in particular with HIDA.
HIDA being what?
The High Intensity Drug.
Trafficking.
Something, HIDA. But, but he's got a, he's, he's earned their respect and, and proven, with proven results. And those, those folks do a tremendous job over there. You know, currently, I think we've got like 125 people on home confinement, which is keeping them out of the jail. We've got people in community service that are keeping them out of jail. It's, it's those opportunities that you have and it's what's, what's so important is to be able to keep the families together and keep them, if they're employed, to keep them employed. And to also accountability, the drug testing that is done through the court systems and you know, it, it, it's, it's working. You know, we've, we've, we've seen multiple opportunities for success. And, and it turns out that we end up hiring some of them because they understand. They understand where the person that's coming through that door has been. So they're so much more effective in helping get them clean and get them healthy again.
Eddie, you have any sense at all how much money has been saved from the regional? Uh, Eddie, you have any sense at all how much money has been saved from the regional jail costs through programs such as this?
Yes, sir. It, it saves Berkeley County tax dollars approximately seven million dollars a year by not incarcerating all these folks. That's a lot of money.
It averages out to over five hundred people a day that don't have to go into jail because of these programs. Five hundred times fifty, sixty dollars a day added up.
Doug Copanaver was a big champion of the Day Report Center. I know, Bill, your commission talked about getting this going as well.
We actually did, and I wanna give, uh, credit to Judd Sanders. When Judd Sanders was here, he pushed it. He got it started. Unfortunately, there was a gap that we, that it, it, it stopped in Berkeley County and then went to Jefferson County and then Berkeley County kinda piggybacked on Jefferson for a while and then through time, the momentum shifted back to Jefferson, uh, to Berkeley County. But Judd Sanders was the first one to do this. We, uh, we, I think, were the third or fourth county in the state to do the Day Reporting Center. But again, we lost continuity. It was, it died for a while in Berkeley County.
Yeah, that coincided with Katie Wilkes Delagetti being elected to the prosecuting attorney position as well.
Exactly.
She was, uh, in favor of the Day Report Center being, uh, created and the activity stepped up there. And when, when Doug talked about really moving these things forward, he, he said he estimated it would save the county a million dollars a year in jail costs and you're saying it's now up to seven to eight million.
Well, it is because we've expanded those programs. You know, we, we, we just didn't stay with the, uh, uh.
Day report only.
The day report and dealing with community service, you know, we've expanded those programs. We've added employees to be able to take on additional, home confinement in particular. So not only, not only Doug, but Dan, uh, was a big supporter.
Dan Doja.
Yep, Dan Doja, uh, as well as Alan Davis. They all played a major role in getting this started. And today, um, you know, it's, that, that facility and the people in it, even though a lot of them that walk in there have, have concerns, they have health concerns, that, that building is thriving. And, and they're making a difference in this community and unless you have a family member, uh, affected by, by this drugs, you may not realize it, but if you do, you will see the difference that are being made by our staff, uh, in those facilities. And we've, because of Jefferson's, uh, Day Report Center, uh, folded, uh, we, we, we were approached by Jefferson. So we now take the, the Jefferson County folks until we can help get them stood up, uh, on their own and they will hand them back to them. But, you know, glad we're able to help because I truly believe in, in what they're doing there and I, I support what they're doing because I've seen the evidence.
Uh, there's a lot of folks deserve credit and, uh, and certainly they, uh, uh, Dan Doja and Doug and others deserve credit. But Rob alluded to an individual a second ago and I wanna come back, circle back to it. And the prosecuting attorney is so critical, so valuable in making this program go. Uh, and Katie's predecessor did never really engage, uh, superficially involved, but never really engaged. Katie became engaged from day one and I think she deserves a lot of credit for making the success that we have today.
Yeah, them and our entire judicial team.
Yes.
Uh, even on the magistrate's side, uh, the, these, these guys are, they're, they're working with us where they can and, uh, they're, they're helping, you know?
Any idea when you'll find out regarding the finances?
I don't know. Steve, you know anything?
Well, no, I mean, it's, everybody's on, on guard, you know? It's just hard to say, but.
It changes from one day to the next, yeah.
And, and also, uh, the way this was written, as we talked about the other day, the more draconian impact will not be felt for some, a couple, a couple so years. Uh, so there's enough time to plan if we get an understanding of what's gonna happen. Right now, it's a big unknown. We know things could happen, but we don't have any idea of what might happen.
Yeah, I can assure you, uh, with the, with the programs that we have and the people that we have in them, uh, and I, and I know that Gary is aware of, of all these, uh, challenges coming forward, that, you know, as you had mentioned, you questioned us during, actually during the break, would we close our doors? And that answer I can tell you is no. We cannot close our doors because it's too valuable to this community. And, uh, uh, with, with Gary at the helm, you know, we will find a way. Uh, we have to find a way. I'm not saying we, we possibly couldn't lose some programs, uh, but our, our doors will be open because we're gonna make a difference.
Instead of saving seven million a year, maybe we go down to only saving five million a year, but that's still five million a year we're gonna save. And so we're gonna continue to have that facility open and have these programs.
And this kinda begs the question, what does the rainy day fund for the county look like?
Yeah, I, I don't know what those numbers, I don't, I don't pay attention to numbers.
Yeah, we're, we're at eight million and we're, that's about fourteen percent of our overall budget, so. We'd like it to be thirty percent. That's what your goal is.
It was about a nickel ten years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It's about eight million dollars right now.
Yeah, it was less than five hundred dollars, uh, when we had that big recession back in two thousand nine, two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Yeah. Maria Lawrence, you've been quiet too long.
So, um, I had the distinct pleasure of going to the ribbon cutting, wearing my other hat, um, as the, uh, chamber chair, um, at the Berkeley County Health Department, which, um, I made comments to the group. You know, that was the home of Hospice of the Panhandle for a while and I can remember in a different era, about eleven, twelve years ago, coming before the county commission saying, you know, talking about what hospice does and then saying, oh, by the way, we're trying to sell this building. And lights went off, um, from some of your predecessors and, uh, lo and behold, then it, um, it took a little more time than just me coming before the county commission, but anyway. You know, it's a delightful building and the expansion is just, um, for the environmental folks is just beautiful. Um, has really made a difference, so.
It did. It turned out really nice. And, you know, with that expansion, uh, somebody who goes in there with a medical need is not setting beside somebody that needs a septic permit.
That's right.
Or, or, you know, so we're able to separate that building and, and make it work much easier for the staff and the people that come there.
Sure.
So that was really a nice addition and, uh, and, uh, it turned out really nice.
It really did.
It makes a great impression for the health department now when people come there. It's professional looking, the staff is happy and it's just a great atmosphere. And a lot of times, your first impression is, has a huge impact on whether you continue to come back or not, or how you relate to those people. And it, it is a first-class facility now that we should be proud of and it's, it's, it's wonderful. The employees are just thrilled with it.
Continuing shift gears, the park in Inwood, the new park, how's that coming?
Wonderful. Uh, hopefully by the mid to latter part of September, we'll be having a groundbreaking, uh, ceremony and they'll go start pushing. So, uh, we're, we're looking forward to that. A lot of people in Inwood are excited about it. And, uh, and not just Inwood, you know, the, the entire kinda south portion of the county. But the school system is excited, uh, churches are excited, so, uh, there's a lot of interest and, uh, you're looking forward to it.
Taking your crystal ball, will we see something similar in the northern part of the county or in the western part of the county?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and Mr. Parks and Rec here beside me, you know, we have those discussions, uh, often and we.
Every day, isn't it?
Yeah, just about. Uh, we're, we're talking, we're talking fire trucks of parks. I mean, that's just what we do.
Are you still the liaison to Park City?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah. So, um, so we have had these discussions and honestly, uh, we can't discuss it today, but we have identified some tracks that we would like to be able to look at, uh, through our impact fee dollars to be able to purchase lands in the, for the future of parks.
And on a not-so-pleasant subject, can I change gears one more time?
Sure.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the sheriff's tax office? Has there been any action in terms of payment of folks who had some claims? Can you talk about that?
I can. I, I would, I would tell you that there, there have been claims that, that we have tried to satisfy, uh, imminent, uh, imminent decisions that need to be made on somebody's behalf of, of their health, uh, and their well-being. We have tried to correct that problem so that they were not negatively affected.
We actually have, we have approved funding to go to those, back to those folks.
And how much are we talking about?
I don't know.
Can you catch us up on what we're talking about here, Maria? Cause we're kinda cryptic about this.
Well, the sheriff's tax office, um, had had some issues over the years. I, I should turn it over to you all to sort of talk about what, um, the, the payment settlement of people whose claims were not either handled correctly. Um, can, can you elucidate that?
I'm gonna tell you, Maria, is that there is an investigation going on.
That's right.
By the state auditor's office as well as other folks. And we truly do not know all of the instances. We do not know all of the situation involving with that. So, you know, there's, I've heard dollar amounts out in the community. Uh, I cannot confirm nor deny what those, what they are because we've not been told what they are. So that discussion, that discussion and investigation is ongoing. And you know as, as well as I, you, you cannot get out in front of it unless it's factual. And, uh, and until, until we have those facts, but, but out to your question. Yes, we have, we have taken care of some of those dire situations that were gonna negatively impact somebody, uh, and, and their health and their needs. So we're, we're doing what we, what we can to do, take care of that.
And there's potential grand jury involvement as well.
Absolutely.
And we as a commission though are fiscally responsible for all of it, even though we didn't have a part in it, so.
Yeah, and on that same thing, let's talk about your ability to house animals, uh, so to speak. Uh, there were charges about that, uh, in the previous administration. And, um, I don't know that a whole lot has come out of that, but there is some improvements being made by the county, by the commission in regards to this. Can you spell those out?
Approved over half a million dollars in recent meetings here to expand the existing, um, animal control centers, so.
Yeah.
And it'll, should bring it up to snuff very well and do a good, make it wonderful, so.
It, it just, they truly, they ran out of space. I mean, that was the biggest thing. I mean, even the staff doesn't have the proper, proper, uh, office space down there. Uh, the, the animals, they're, they're cared for every day, uh, but it can be better, you know, and that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, you walk by there, cause that's where there's a, the rail trail goes right by there and you're just sort of taken aback because, you know, the animals are back there and they're making noise like they do.
When the population grows, that, the old good cat population grows with it, so.
Yeah, on the subject of, for, don't do it now, but for several years, I would take dog biscuits down on a monthly basis, but, and I walked through it every time. And the spaces were inadequate, but the attention of the, the officers, the staff was exemplary. They really care for those animals and do everything they can within the very inadequate space they have.
Yep.
The Sheriff Blair has, uh, really gotten on that since he's been in office and he's pushed us and asked us for funding and we're gonna help him out with this now and spend, uh, like I say, over half a million dollars to expand that facility and it's much, much needed, so.
I wanna circle back to, uh, impact fees, Steve, because you made mention of this and we couldn't give it any attention at the time as we were talking about a whole lot of stuff with that, but you mentioned that some of the fees would go down if you actually included the city in, in this?
That's correct.
Yeah, talk about that.
Right now, it's at fifty-five hundred.
For fifty-five hundred for what?
Uh, fire and rescues at thirteen hundred, for instance, that's one of them that would go down, okay? Probably a couple hundred dollars. Uh, law and enforcement is two, three seventy-two, it'll stay the same. That's the max that we can charge. Uh, uh, fire and rescue, I, I said was at thirteen hundred. County administration, I'm sorry, was at thousand twelve and it'll go down a couple hundred. Fire and rescue will, will stay at thirteen hundred because the city has fire and rescue, so it won't affect that. And then county administration is at a thousand twelve and then Parks and Rec is at seventeen hundred and twenty-one dollars and it'll probably go down several hundred dollars as well.
And this is because you'd be, you'd have more volume coming in.
Including more population now in the, uh, situation.
Will, will the gross amount that you collect be the same with the lowering of these fees or will that amount go up as well?
The, the, well, I mean, obviously you don't know, but I mean, you would hope that it, but the actual rate would go down, but you would think that the gross would be pretty much the same, you know, because of the extra fees that would come in then, so.
Is there an estimate in regards to the number of structures being built in the city on a regular basis?
I don't have.
It's probably Kevin Knowles' question or not.
I don't have that number. We just know the county totals, it range from twelve hundred to fourteen hundred a year, so.
And the transfer tax, that's now, that was, when that came in, it was layered as a certain percentage every year when John Hardy helped get that bill passed and now it's a hundred?
As of July first, it, we get now a hundred percent of the funding that the state was keeping. Wonderful thing.
And do we know what that may amount to in a year? Obviously it varies based on the number of properties, but.
Right, the farm land protection gets, uh, two dollars and twenty cents of that seven seventy. And they, their average income is between two point five and three million a year. That's what the state was keeping, that same amount. So we're getting two point five to three million more a year because the state has given that money back to us, so.
Yeah, it had been one-third, 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 with state keeping one-third, farm land protection one-third, and the county one-third, so.
Yeah, and I think what it was.
But now the county was higher. It was at three thirty and, uh, so the county's been at three thirty. And, and that's, we're at the max level. Seven seventy per thousand is the max. We can't exceed that.
Okay, so, and, and your annual budget every year is, is what?
Annual budget, fifty-three million, fifty-four, fifty-three million in that range right now.
So this is two, three million dollars a year that comes in as part of that?
And we've been getting it over the last several years, so, yeah.
Incrementally, yeah, cause I think when that first passed, it was ten percent every year for ten years until it fell to a maximum.
Then we got it reduced to a five-year thing where it was twenty, fifty, and then, so luckily we got it accelerated and now as of July first. In fact, at the meeting we were at with the auditor's office, they talked about that, you know, you're getting all the, uh, transfer money now back to your county, so.
Now, October one, the impact fees kick in. And so does, does that mean if someone comes into the offices on October first for a permit, that that day you will start collecting fees?
That's correct.
That's anticipated, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, you got a minute left. If there was anything else you wanted to cover, now's the time to speak about it.
Well, I mean, we, we just, we just left a conference, an auditor's conference, uh, this past week and, uh, everybody's saying, all right, there, everybody there is waiting to see what we do. That, and that's the rest of the state. They're, they're waiting to see how we do and what we do because they know what we do, they're more likely, they're gonna benefit from it. So, uh, you know, they're, they're always asking, how do you, how do you do on your fire stuff? You know, and we got twenty-four seven out in our firehouses now and it's tremendous. I, I'm really proud of, of that. These guys are doing good work and, uh, you know, that was a long time coming, but, uh.
The state, state artist sat down to dinner with us the other night and we sat there and talked for fifteen, twenty minutes about some issues, things that need to be corrected on the state level. You know, why do you put us in this situation? You gotta help us out here, you know?
I think he was glad to get away from us.
Well, yeah, but, but he listened. He listened.
That's the important part. Eddie and Steve, thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
We appreciate the hour. It's nine o'clock. This is Talk Radio, W R R Martinsburg and, uh, TV ten.